Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Revere City Council October 4, 2021 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Council Vice President Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo is absent. There's a quorum present.
Thank you.
Approval of the Journal of the regular meeting of September 27?
So would.
Motion approves.
Yes. We, I first want to say Council President is out sick this evening, and we all wish him a speedy recovery. But if my colleagues do not object, I'd like just a moment of personal privilege, if that's okay with everyone. I want to address some of the false information that's been circulating on social media this last week regarding the housing of the homeless people and those battling substance abuse disorder at the Quality Inn, okay? As of today, there is nobody living in that building. So let me reiterate that one more time. So our community is well aware of that, and we can stop any rumors that are passing along social media and spreading like wildfire, okay? There is no one living in that building as of today, okay? I'm not done, okay? I've had conversation with the mayor today, along with Police Chief Callahan, and they have confirmed, both of them, that nobody is there, there is no intention on having anybody there. The Revere Police Department, along with the Saugus Police Department, have been traveling and making stops in that area, okay, at that site for precautionary measures only. They are being proactive on this matter solely because we don't trust the Boston Public Health Commission, along with the city of Boston, okay? So that is the reason why the Revere Police Department is circling that area and making the stops there, along with the Saugus Police Department, okay? It is a collaborative effort with the Saugus, the town of Saugus, and I just want to make that quite clear. And the other thing that I want to make clear is that this city council up here, the 11 people that are up here oppose, okay, of that, the Quality Inn being a transitional housing spot for the people at the mass cast area. We are opposed of that. I think we've made that quite clear in the last meeting, okay? So there are no lies that are being spread through social media. We're not lying up here. We all oppose it. The mayor opposes it, okay, as well as every single council counselor up here, and I just want to make that quite clear. So there's no doubt, and the community is well aware that these 11 counselors up here are fighting to make sure that that doesn't happen in our community. That's all. Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'm gonna leave that, I'm gonna end that, this discussion, and let that be. But I appreciate the latitude, and I just wanted to make that quite clear. Thank you.
Next up, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry, I was taken back by that speech. Good job. Good job. So there were three items on the agenda in Legislative Affairs, which one of them were voted out favorably. 2-1-3-31, Communication from the Mayor Relative to Home Rule Petition for an Easement and Fee Transfers on Revere Beach Parkway from State Agencies to the City of Revere for Municipal Purposes, was voted out favorably. So if we can get a roll call on that agenda item, which was favorited. Yes.
Can we have a roll call?
Shall the city council approve an act authorizing the Department of Conservation and Recreation and the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance to transfer an easement in certain property and the fee in certain properties to the city of Revere for municipal purposes? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Vice President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo is absent.
Madam Clerk, can you read motion 21-306?
Madam Clerk, point of information, I didn't realize that this was on the actual legislation, so I am recused from this matter, so I should have been recused before the roll call. Thank you.
Councilor Janino was recorded as being recused from discussion and voting on this matter. This special act passes.
21-306, Madam Clerk.
Next up, from the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report, Council Order 21-306, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor requests the city solicitor to draft an ordinance and fee schedule for the following, that any autonomous driven vehicle operated by a Revere resident and housed in Revere must pay excise tax to the city of Revere and a use fee of $5 and a $1 per mile charge while operating in Revere. Said vehicle will follow all state, federal laws, and be assigned to the city of Revere Hackney Division for oversight.
Thank you. The Subcommittee earlier thought it was best to recommend this to the city solicitor for guidance, and so this will be placed with the city solicitor with, for a recommendation. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda was 21-308.
It's a motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the city council amend the rules of order to permit the submission of a maximum of 10 motions per meeting when the city council meets twice in any given month. Further, that at the discretion of the president, that a counselor be permitted to speak on four motions.
Thank you. So Subcommittee met earlier, and we thought, due to time constraints and considering over for, as far as I can remember, and some of my colleagues who've been on the council for 30 years, the way our order of business is, is currently working. So we decided not to go forward with 10 motions per meeting and keep the existing order of structure, and that was voted unfavorable.
Oh, is that a roll? Can we have a roll call on the Subcommittee?
Shall the city council approve Councilor Rotundo's motion, changing the rules of order to allow a maximum of 10 motions per meeting? Councilor Janino?
No.
No, Councilor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councilor Keefe?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
No.
No, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Powers?
No.
No, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
No.
No, Councilor Visconti?
No.
No, and Council President Zambudo is absent. The motion fails. Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, we had two items before us. The first being a communication from the mayor guiding the appointment of Dr. Drew Bunker to the Board of Health, and he was voted out favorably. I asked the city council to vote him out favorably also. And the second item, number 21-294, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Natalie Pardo to the Human Rights Commission. Natalie Pardo called a clerk today and asked that her name be withdrawn. So I asked that be placed on file. Please vote out 21-262 at the recommendation of the Appointment Subcommittee.
I'm gonna ask for a roll call for 21-262, Dr. Drew Bunker.
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Dr. Drew Bunker to the Board of Health? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo is absent. The appointment has been confirmed.
And Counselor 21-294 is placed on file.
Onto motions? Yep. Calendar item number eight.
I would like to request the suspension of rules for the purpose of a late motion that just so happens to be mine, so I apologize for that.
Late motion presented by Councilor Visconti, that the city council requests Representative Turco to address the city council relative to parking meters on Revere Beach Boulevard.
Mr. Representative, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of the city council. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you for the first time at this podium as the representative from Revere, so thank you for the opportunity. I want to begin by recognizing my great colleague, Representative Janino, for her partnership, but I'm thrilled to stand before you. There's been all kinds of reports online, but I'm here to confirm that the House of Representatives and the Massachusetts Senate on September 23, and again on September 30, overrode the veto of the governor, the Commonwealth, on a bill that would prohibit the DCR from putting meters, paid meters, on a roadway, parkway, highway, within the jurisdiction of the DCR without the express written approval of the local appropriating authority, in this case, the Revere City Council. That law that took effect after it was overridden on September 30 is retroactive to January 1 of 2021. The meters are coming down on Revere Beach. You know, nothing gets done without partnership, and as I said at the beginning, you know, my partner at the State House is Representative Janino. I can't thank you enough for your leadership on this issue. But two of my colleagues in government, interestingly enough, that don't represent Revere deserve some credit. Frankly, I jokingly told Representative Livingstone that I was gonna suggest we put a statue of him on Revere Beach. So Representative Jay Livingstone from Beacon Hill, and now the Back Bay, and Senator Bill Brownsberger really took a lead on this. You know, Rep. Janino and I broke this up into two things. One, we put in a bill which became House 4004, which was enacted on August 3, and that law says that 50% of all the revenues that are collected on Revere Beach, either from meters or fines, goes into a trust fund that is spent exclusively on Revere Beach after consultation with the mayor every November on an annual basis. That was signed into the law after the governor had initially sent it back with some suggested amendments. So that's what we worked on to make sure that the meters were a done deal. We wanted to make sure that we were getting the money, or at least a good portion of the money. And then our colleagues in Boston recognized that DCR was looking to put meters in their area, and unfortunately for DCR, they bit off more than they could chew, and Representative Livingstone, again, deserves a lot of credit for taking the lead in this thing and bringing us into the fold to make sure that it happened. And so the legislature, as I said, overrode the governor's veto, and I couldn't be happier because it really, you know, from the get-go, you know, we had people standing on the beach, citizens were protesting on the beach and taking a stand saying, this is America's first public beach, and we ought not to make it a paid beach. It's a public beach. It's been that way for 125 years, and thanks to the leadership of, you know, Speaker Mariano and Senate President Spilka allowing this to happen with the override, you know, I can't be, I couldn't be happy enough to say that these things are, in fact, coming down. DCR sent me a text message on Saturday morning to say, we just want to let you know, we will not be collecting money from the meters. They've been reprogrammed to say there's no fee due. If you had the online app, it also says no fee is due. They've ceased all enforcement of it. There was some rumor that they were gonna put trash bags over them to cover them up. That is, in fact, not the case. I strongly told DCR in the most polite way possible that that would not be taken kindly by the people of Revere and the people that visit the beach often. But I did want to also just thank, you know, some of the colleagues up here in government because, again, we're a partnership at the state and local level. I got more phone calls from Councilor McKenna and Councilor Novoselski and Councilor Powers, and Councilor Rotundo was there at the protest, talking about how their neighborhoods were being affected, and, you know, and the mayor deserves a lot of credit as well because, frankly, the mayor joined with Senator Moncor- former Senator Moncorry, Rep. Janino and I, right from the get-go, and went right at the commissioner and talked about having some spaces reserved for residents of Revere, and so I did want to thank the mayor publicly for his leadership on this issue as well. I don't need to prolong it. I will leave with the clerk, if you want, copies of House 4010, I got several copies for you, and also House 4004 as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about this, and thank you for your partnership to make today possible. I don't think anyone thought it would happen.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to thank my colleague, Rep. Turco, for his leadership on this. This really was, when you say a true collaborative effort, it was a collaboration. And, you know, it's important for the people of Revere to recognize, when Rep. Turco and I got into office at the very beginning of this year, we had very big shoes to fill. He walked into the seat of the Speaker of the House, which is not an easy task, and, you know, quite frankly, right after we walked into office, myself in January and you shortly after in March, we were faced with one of the biggest issues the city's had in a long time, and that was these meters, and people were upset. And I think it's really important for people to realize that when you work together, good things can happen, and this is a perfect example of that. We came together as a community, which I'm sure we will on many more issues. We said, not here, not now, and it didn't happen. So Rep. Turco, thank you for your leadership on this, and thank you for really working with us to make sure this got done. I appreciate it as a city counselor and as your colleague in the House, and honored to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the residents on the Revere Beach Boulevard, particularly where the residences are. I want to thank you on behalf of them, the people in the Jack Sata House, Seaview Towers, The Breakers, The Atlantic, and all those buildings. Most of those people down there, many of them are elderly. They have visits from sons, daughters, they have visits from friends and brothers and sisters, and more importantly, medical technicians, and they should not have ever had to be putting money in those meters. I want to thank, you know, yourself and, of course, my colleague, Jessica Gino, and I spoke with Jay last night on the phone, and it's, we're very happy, and I'm sure the people down there are gonna be very happy. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Councilor McKenna?
Thank you. Rep. Turco, thank you for taking all my calls, and Ward 1 was really affected because Ward 1 didn't really get anything when it was negotiated. So these people that lived there permanently, they didn't have any place to So these people that lived there permanently, they didn't have any place to park, and we had to fight just to have them park on Ocean Ave and get stickers. So thank you and Jessica Janino for your hard work, and this is truly a victory for Riviera and Massachusetts because it is the first public beach in, you know, the United States, and we shouldn't have meters. So thank you so much. Well, I know the people worked hard, residents worked hard, but you got it done. Thank you, and thank you for mentioning the counselors. I really appreciate it.
Teamwork.
Thank you. Counselor Rotundo.
Government of the people, follow the people, by the people, and that's who shot at us, the people. And as far as I'm concerned, this is a win for everybody. This is how governments work. And more importantly, I want to thank my colleague, Jessica Janino, as well as yourself, Representative Turco, Representative Janino. But I do have one question. Is there anything that we have to do as a council in order to prevent anything further, any enactment or anything at all?
Counselor, thank you for the question. There's nothing that you need to do now. DCR would need to come to the city with a proposal to put meters on the beach under House 4010, and then the council would then have to vote up, you know, would consider it, and if you deigned to vote on it, you'd vote up or down on whether to enter into an agreement. But they cannot do so. But just so we're clear, the two laws work in tandem. So the first one is, if you say no to meters, that's the end of it. If you said yes to meters, and some future council said yes, then the second law would say at least 50% of the revenue from the meters and from the fines would have to stand the beach. But there's been some talk about, oh, the meters will be back next year. The meters will not be back on Riviera Beach unless the majority of the city council--
And this is currently law, as you--
That is the law of the Commonwealth as of September 30th.
Mr. Vice President, may I suspend rules?
Cool.
We are under suspension. Thank you for reminding me, Counselor Sorino. And I would like to make a motion that the city of Riviera does not ever entertain placing any parking meter on Riviera Beach as a motion. Madam Clerk, can we write that down? And I ask for a roll call.
at any time.
On Counselor Rotundo's verbal motion that the city of Riviera shall not permit any parking meters on Riviera Beach Boulevard at any time, Counselor Janino.
Recused.
Is recused. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo is absent. The motion is approved.
Can we take this up for reconsideration in case, so it does not prevail?
On the reconsideration, on the hopes that it does not prevail, that it fails, so move. Council President, could you please tell the public that there are no meters down there, that there will be no meters down there? To the community, to the Riviera community, the meters on Riviera Beach have been removed. Thank you. If I may, if I just may from the chair, speak one on that moment for one second. I want to say thank you to Representative Turco, as well as Representative Janino, as well as Rep. Jay Livingstone. But what, you mentioned it while you were up there. We had a lot of people that were there fighting and that were protesting weekend after weekend, and those people voiced their opinion, and they should be heard, and their voices were heard. So they are to be commended as well on this, and, but it's because of you guys up in the State House that this gets done. Their voices were heard. It's like a domino effect. They spoke, you listened, and it got done. So I commend all of you for a job well done. The collaboration on this was, it was a joint collaboration, and it's a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Back to the order of business.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilors Morabito and Keith that the city council awards certificates of commendation to the Patriots for winning the 2021 Riviera Youth Girls Softball Championship.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. VP. Last week, we gave certificates of recognition to the boys' championship teams, and we don't want to leave out the girls because they're just as great of athletes as the guys, so I look forward to save my comments to that night and, as well as sharing my comments with them.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Like Counselor Morabito, we're excited to recognize these young ladies and these coaches and the volunteers of this organization and reward them, and we've done this in the past. We've been doing this for many years. Last year was a little different, but it's good to get them back up in the chambers. I know how excited the families get, and as a personal friend of ours, both you and myself and a couple of the other members of the council, it's going to be nice to recognize Cory and her efforts with the Patriots. Congratulations.
On the motion, so ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the DPW to install a crosswalk light at 265 Beet Street at the Vasa Funeral Home.
Speaks for itself. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor requests the appropriate state agency to clean the graffiti from the bridge extending over the train tracks on Winthrop Avenue at Route 16. Several 3-1-1 requests have been submitted over the summer for this issue, but there has been no action taken by the state to clean their property.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm sorry this is in front of the council, but I have put this in several times in 3-1-1, and it hasn't been done. There's still graffiti all over the Winthrop Ave Bridge, and I just want the right agency to clean it up. We don't know if it's DCR, and we don't know if it's MassDOT. So I'd really like to have it cleaned up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Janino is recused from that motion. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Sorino that the mayor requests Mastott to change the configuration of the light at the movie theater site on Squire Road for the time being to a blinking red light. With the movie theater closed, it makes little sense to have a full traffic light cycle for now. Counselor Janino was recorded as recused from discussion on this motion.
Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resident brought this to my attention, and I thought it was a great idea. So with the Showcase Cinema now closed and beginning to be demolished, there's really no traffic going in and out of that site besides construction vehicles, and, you know, there's really no need to have a full traffic light cycle. So at least until Amazon comes in and we reconfigure the traffic pattern for that, for the time being, I would hope that Mastott could just make this a blinking red stop, stop light, stop, not stop sign, but a blinking red light to stop instead of just stopping for a while. So, thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Late communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jan Dumas to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
Refer that to Appointment Subcommittee on October 18.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of John Dove to the Library Board of Trustees.
Refer this to the Appointment Subcommittee on October 18th as well.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Mark Ferenti to the Library Board of Trustees.
This is to be referred to the Appointment Subcommittee on October 18.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Frank Chitino to the Library Board of Trustees.
Appointment Subcommittee, October 18.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Nancy Spawn Panato to the Library Board of Trustees.
Appointment Subcommittee, October 18.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order for the MWRA-led service line replacement loan program.
This is ordered to a public hearing on October 25.
Calendar item number 19, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order for an infiltration inflow removal design project.
This is ordered to a public hearing on October 25th as well.
Late motions, calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor, Sudi, or his designee appear before the city council to discuss the available position for a harm reduction nurse.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, my apologies. My concern is that we have put out for a harm reduction nurse, and the skill set that they're requiring leads me to believe that this could invite for certain uses of the harm reduction nurse other than administration of Suboxone or anything like that. I would like to ask the mayor himself, so not to get ahead of myself, and actually would invite the Dr. Bunker to that meeting and have an open discussion with the mayor or his designee from Sudi, as well as the chief. If we need to meet in executive session for certain issues regarding that, I'm fine with that as well, but I would like to find out what's going on with that because there are changes at the state legislature with regards to the use of harm reduction nursing, and that can open up Pandora's Box here in the city of Riviera. Thank you.
I'm going to refer this to the committee, the Subcommittee of Health and Human Services, We can work that out.
No, it'll be more than 15 minutes.
Next motion.
Next late motion, presented by Council Vice President Visconti that the city council awards certificates of commendation to the Riviera Youth Softball Senior League Division Champions, the Bears.
My apologies for the late motion on this as well. The Bears won the championship series last Friday, I think it was, and like my colleague said, the girls need some recognition as well, and I thought it was only fair that they would get some recognition. So I commend them for recognizing the younger girls, and these are the older girls in the division. Thank you. There's no further business. Oh, let me, all in favor, all opposed on that one? There is no further business. Meeting is adjourned to, the next meeting is October 18th. Thank you. Ooh, I'm sorry.